We have some new faces in the audience, not all new faces, more than what usually come in the summer. Is there anybody who would like to share anything with us in the public format? We're at that point in the meeting where you can step to the podium. All right, so step up to the podium and make sure that microphone is on and state your name.
Good evening. I am Kayla Basoa. This is my brother, Mike Stromkowski. We are both proud Amherst natives. And I am a mother to four daughters, and my brother has two kids, a son and a daughter. Our children, of course, come here to Amherst. And we were coming today to express our concern over Biden's Title IX and the possible implementation of it in our schools. We are also proud members of the Moms for Liberty. And when I first heard of Title IX, I became concerned, not only for the sake of my own children, but for genuinely the sake of Amherst as a community and the children and the potential harm that would have on all of us. Treat thy neighbor with love and respect, or treat others how you would want to be treated. It's a golden rule that most of us are familiar with, and I certainly try my best to live by it as well. And my husband and I try to instill this rule into our children. But I also depend on my community to instill that on my children, especially as they come to Amherst, eight-plus hours a day, five days a week during the school year. And I think that if Tomorrow River Schools were to implement Title IX, I would lose trust in this community. The damaging consequence of a ruling of this nature takes away our children's right for privacy, purity, and innocence. We need educators and mentors to support parents as they raise strong, loving, intelligent young men and women. At school, students should receive education and reinforcement, not a government-imposed identity crisis. I know I'm just one small voice, but I am speaking on behalf of what I try to live my life by and what I try to tell my children to live their life by and to speak truth. So let's try and treat thy neighbor with the love and respect that they deserve, keeping Title IX out of our schools so that privacy and respect of ourselves and others can remain. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on with the remainder of the meeting, and we'll start with future board meeting dates. Our next meeting is set for August 19th. Beyond that, we go September 16th, October 28th, November 18th. Is that all good with all board members? Keep them the same. Next item is PTO report. Do we have one tonight? There we do. Yes.
So I'll introduce myself again. I'm Abby Sankey. I am the vice president. We just, I just ran down here from our meeting, so I'm a little out of breath. We just went over our event schedule for the year and finalized some of those things. And our next event coming up will be our back-to-school night. We plan to hopefully get a lot of new emails for our email list. Our email list has a lot of people on it, and I'm not sure that everyone on the list wants to be on the list anymore. So we're hoping to kind of overhaul that and try to get new people and new emails from the people that want to be involved in PTO with us to help us out and do some new events this year. So that's where we are right now, and we don't have anything else really going on until the back-to-school night. Oh, I guess we do. Actually, I'm totally wrong. On August 12th, we're doing a back-to-school, like, playdate meetup, so families and their kids can come. We're gonna go to the playground at the elementary school, and kids can kind of meet their friends. If they're new to the school district, they can meet some new parents, some new, whoever shows up, I guess, maybe teachers. And then we're gonna have our next PTO meeting directly after that. Maybe some of the parents will stay and get involved with us. So that will be our next event, August 12th.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is administrative supervisor reports. And it's also, there's also a copy for board members where you can look and see the, from June, you know, the month's worth of social media review, you know, all the dates, you know, number of contacts and so forth. We'll start with Mr. Ruggles.
Yeah. Can we talk about that? Thank you, Mark. So School Social has done, does a nice job managing our social media accounts, so that they manage our Instagram and also they manage our Facebook. We no longer have our X account or formerly Twitter account. We just did not have much membership there. So the, on the social media review, you can see we tend to do pretty well for a kind of punch below, above our weight for a district our size. We do pretty well. June is kind of a low time for social media. You might have seen some, some questions that they've been putting out there, like, just to try to get a little more dialogue going with community, just for some fun posts. But it's a time for vacations and other things, so they're trying to be creative throughout the month. In August, we'll definitely see a lot more welcome back, getting ready for school and informational things going out. So we definitely think that our social media numbers will be jumping up again come August. A few other updates. I wanted to start with the DPI Innovation Grant. So I had shared a while back that we were one of, as we found out this last week, 10 districts within the state that received the DPI Innovation Grant. So I was one of six staff members from our district that spent three nights and four days on the grounds of Lowenwood in Land O' Lakes. That is a former conserve school. So Sherri Olson loved Dornliven, by the way. She absolutely loved it. Like...
It was better than I thought it was.
It was, it was. Although, you know, the three emails they sent beforehand telling us to bring bug spray, I was getting a little worried, I gotta say. But during that time, we created an action plan to support our school improvement process. And kind of the premise behind the Innovation Grant was, schools are kind of all in a place right now where budgets are tight, you know, there's not a lot to be had in that regard. So what can we do differently with what we have? And how can we look at research and how can we look at our processes and improve them? So our team created a pretty awesome plan around student demonstration of learning. We're gonna definitely talk more about that with our staff in August as we roll that out. But we're super excited about it. It's connected to our new profile of a learner, which will be on the agenda later today. We had already shared kind of the final version, but now we have the final visual version that we wanted to share here today. So it's exciting to see those works really come together, because our talk was, we really wanna make sure that new profile of learner is something that's lived. It's not just a poster on the wall. It's something that we really mean and that we see in every single classroom across our district. So another update I wanted to share, we have some athletic donations that we're working on through the Amherst Youth Football Program and the Cheer programs. So we were approached a little earlier in the summer by those organizations, and they shared they wanted to help us with a couple of different things. One, they wanted to help us with our sound systems within the gym and out on the field as well, in terms of updating those. So we've kind of talked through what that process could be and what is needed, not only in the gym and on the field. So we're still working on that piece. But they also wanted to purchase us a new washer and a new dryer for athletic teams. Right now, when lots of the helpers for athletic teams come in and they're washing uniforms, trying to get ready for the next game day, it is quite the process with what we have right now. We have some old equipment up there. So we are getting a new heavy-duty washer, new heavy-duty, new heavy-duty dryer that is gonna be fully donated by those organizations. So it's pretty awesome. So I want to give a big shout out and thank you to that organization, specifically Michael Nerdal, who has been kind of leading that process. He's the treasurer, along with Amy Lusick, who is the president, Connie Zanella, the concessions, Chris Loken, the VP and Equipment Manager, Shannon Miller in Communications, and then Dream Scott Communications and their volunteer coordinator as well. So that's gonna help us tremendously, and we definitely appreciate all those donations within the community. Last, I have a few dates that I just want to make sure is on our calendar. August 26th, all of our staff will be back, and we're actually gonna be starting our day in Iola. We're gonna partner with the school district of Iola, Scandinavia. We're bringing in a national speaker, and then we're doing a workshop after that where our teachers are gonna collaborate with their teachers around some planning, around our new Gen Z and Alpha learners and engagement within the classroom. So we're excited for that. It was, it was a good way to get our teachers collaborating with other teachers and also keep costs low as well, because the price for him to come to one of us or both of us was the same. So we said, let's work together and be creative in that regard. On August 27th, that will be our district convocation, where everybody, well, you guys are invited to the 26th as well, but the 27th is where we will welcome all of our staff back formally and do our big Urah and get ready for the year. Last, on August 28th, the Wednesday of that week, and this is in pencil right now, so it's kind of to save the date. We're looking at that date for our ribbon-cut-in ceremony for the STEAM edition. So we've cleared that date with Hoffman. I have a message out to the Wolden family, because obviously they're instrumental in that space. So I'm hoping by the end of the week, we can turn that from pencil to pen. We're looking at around a 3:30-ish presentation, because at 4 o'clock is our open house, and we thought that way all of our teachers would be here. We'd have, we'd have community members be here, and then we could go right from the ribbon-cut-in right into the open house. It'd be, it'd be a really nice event.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mike Cleeford, you're gonna talk to us about AP and dual credit?
So dual credits, I attached the letter, the report. We saved our students $39,027, $0.40 in college tuition just through that program. This year, well over 200, probably closer to 4 million if you added AP, which is dual credit, which is a, which is a really big number. Before, five years ago, we were well under $100,000, so we've grown that program pretty well and continue to add dual credit for our students to, hopefully coming across that and moving to college. So it's a good number for our students. AP-wise, we had our highest pass rate, the most students ever in AP, and the highest pass rate we've ever had in the history of the school, which is really good. I was pleasantly surprised. I knew they would do well. We always do well, but how well we did with the amount of kids that worked in AP, because there's a lot of kids who were trying it for the first time, maybe a little leery, but they did a great job. 83.87% pass rate, and retrospect, the state pass rate is about 72%, and the global pass rate is about 67%. So that 83 is a big number, 12% higher than the state pass rate. So part of our students and staff, they, it was fantastic. Special thank you for Jen Giersmo, Brandon Stromkowski, Joanna Slattery, Mark Lusick, and Jason Pickering for all the work that they did. They put in a lot of extra hours and study sessions to ensure the kids do well, so before school, after school, on their own time, lunchtime. They gave up a lot of their time to help the students do study, study work. Also, we had a lot of classes who had 100% pass rate. That included Calculus BC, English Lit and Comp, Environmental Science, and US History, all were at 100% pass rate. And some of those classes weren't even close to that previously. Definitely a lot of hard work on both students and staff to get that.
Is that program expanding? We're adding a class next year, right?
We are adding AP.
Bio or something?
Chemistry.
Chemistry. Okay, great.
So we had bio this year, and next year...
Then nobody took the test then this year? Because it didn't?
They weren't 100%.
Oh, okay.
They were fine. Those were just the ones that were 100%.
Okay.
And they're not making the test easier?
No. And the problem is this year, they're changing it to some other classes are computer format, so we have to, like, US History, Lit and Comp, I think Psychology, all have to be taken on the computer this year. So that's gonna be September end, or we can even do that at the Justice Center if it has to be on our system. We don't know any of those.
Make sure you check that out, because during COVID, we had to do that, and people that had Apple products had some difficulties, and we had a few students that were disqualified from their scores for, so just make sure the format works.
I would assume that they're moving to all online testing at some point, but that's the ones we have to online this year.
So charter school report, there's none right now, I see?
No report for charter school.
Okay. All right. The athletic report, I can read through that very quickly. Adam here. Varsity football starts August 5th with equipment handout. Middle school football starts August 12th. Varsity soccer, cross-country volleyball. Middle school cross-country and middle school volleyball starts August 19th. Middle school soccer starts August 27th. Parent-athlete sports meeting is on August 4th at 6:00 PM. Are there any other reports? Hearing none, we'll move on. We have one teacher contract we have to approve.
It was approved.
It was approved.
Yeah, it's just informational.
Oh, it's just informational, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, then we'll move on to consent agenda. Are there any items in the consent agenda that you won't hold out and address separately? If not, I'm looking for a motion to approve it as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in second. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll move on to discussion-action items, starting with annual milk bids, 7.1. One bid.
Really?
That's, that's normal. The one year we had two bids, it was, I believe, People's Meat Market, and that was, that was a nightmare.
How much?
Stick with what works.
How much did it go up?
I honestly don't know. Maryland didn't put anything in there about that.
Well, that's food service dollars, right?
Yes, yes.
I see the price for food service went up anyway, so I don't know if that reflects that, but...
I honestly don't think it went up much, because we're still okay at the 40 cents per carton. I don't think they requested upping that.
All right. Well, being that it's the only bid, and we need milk.
Yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
The one question I had is when they talked about the coolers. So do we have our own coolers, or are we using theirs? Does anybody know?
Oh...
It says in there that, over the years, they've provided them, and then it says, some school districts may have aging equipment that we have placed at their schools. So I was wondering if we know if we have our equipment?
I believe we do use a couple of theirs, I think. Yeah, the mobile, like, down by the 4K wing down there. Yeah.
So it does say that, you know, they're not gonna guarantee that they're gonna replace them or have anything available for us or even fix them anymore?
Yeah. And if worse comes to worse, food service...
Has the money to be able to buy them.
Still has a pretty good fund balance that they, you know, that would be a good expenditure if need be.
So I don't know if, I don't know if Jess sees these, sees this?
She should.
She does. Okay. I was just curious.
Any other questions?
Did you guys have last year's prices?
Yeah, I found it here. Looks like a few percent.
She does summarize the increases, and that notes there on the right-hand side of the chart.
Oh, yeah. Couple percent, just like everything else.
I saw a motion to approve the milk contract.
I'll second.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 7.2 review and possibly approved meal and milk price changes for '24, '25.
And this is the price that students pay to the school, right?
Students and faculty and adults.
Right.
Looks like it goes right in line with the prices.
Don't think we've increased it for a couple years now, so...
Yeah, last year stayed the same. I'll make a motion to approve meal and milk prices for 2024, 2025.
I'll second. Go ahead, Kelly.
I'll second.
Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Review and first reading of the new Niola School Board policy post-secondary reimbursement.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, sorry. Adopt the learner graduate profile. I'm just so confident we're gonna pass that right by that.
Well, absolutely. You, you are part of that team.
So you've seen a couple versions of this now, and this is the most recent edited, kind of final version that we wanted to bring to the board for final approval. Again, we started this process in November and had group meetings out throughout the winter where we finalized our characteristics that we wanted all of our students to have. So we looked at the number of characteristics and which skills we thought were the most important. We surveyed all of our parents. We surveyed all of our staff, used all the information to create this portrait of a learner. Jen Burdan was absolutely amazing in the creation of this document, when we shared with her some examples of other graduate profiles or learner profiles from other districts, and we shared, this is what we like, this is what we don't like. And she was able to take everything that we said and just truly visualize it, I feel so well, onto this document. So the hope is that we would take this forward now, and this would, we have copies of this in every single classroom. And the next step for us, behind-the-scenes work, is to talk about what metrics we're gonna have to measure that these things are happening across the board. So as Mike shared some of our AP scores earlier, you know, this success for our picture of a learner is different than just our state report card, you know, which is just a few metrics. It's just attendance and just student achievement. So we want to look at all different types of achievement and different ways that our students show their character, communication, citizenship, collaboration, and critical thinking in every, at every grade level across the board. So any other, any other questions or comments on the profile?
Nope. I make a motion to approve the portrait of a learner.
I'll second.
Motion in second. Since there were no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll look at the first reading of the new post-secondary reimbursement policy. And there's a copy of that in there. Very short.
So just some worrying changes. I don't know what I'm worrying about, but the reason being is there was really no teeth for on-dual policy, and students who take Star College Now classes, the classes of attack. If they drop the class halfway through, as they could just drop it, or if they fail it, we're paying to bill 3, 4, 500 bucks in some cases for these classes. And I don't think that's right that we're paying to the classes if they're not gonna follow through on their end. So if the students are gonna follow through, one, each class or two pass the class, maybe they feel good. That's up to them. So pretty much all other schools do that. Our policy is not very clear in that. Let's just fix it for now. So if you're gonna be, if you don't get the class, you're gonna be helping to pass the classes. Otherwise, consequences you get.
And you've seen some...
We got stuck with three of them last year, and that's not okay in my opinion.
You've seen some policies from other districts.
Yep.
Yeah.
This gives one very similar one to one other district.
We had a similar policy in my former district as well. You know, again, it's just something as to, when students are thinking about taking these classes, we want to make sure they're doing it with the right intent, and they're really thinking through their process and making sure they're looking at their full caseload, because, you know, we are required to pay as a district for those courses for students to have that opportunity. So this, again, just make sure that they're serious about taking those classes.
And typically, you said they're $300 to $500?
Yeah, it could be. I mean, it all depends on the class, depends on books, depends on the class. Well, every, it fluctuates depending on the class, but we legally have to pay for the Star College Now. Every kid can sign up for Star College Now. Our bill's been very big, and that's what's been paying a big, a bunch of money, but we have to do that as part of the program. So I mean, if they're gonna do that, they need to be responsible enough to follow through it and do the classes. And we just need to communicate with all the parents and families and students. I have a dinner in my high school in a book that I'll get approved next week. I was just waiting for some of my stuff and see if I could change language in there.
So you had three that didn't follow through. How many total did you have?
A lot. We have a lot of kids from East Star College Now.
Like 20, 30?
Oh, we have, there's tons of thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah, there's...
That's, that's a lot.
I would think, if I was guessing, 40 to 50 kids maybe are taking post-secondary.
Many of which take multiple, many of which take multiple courses.
There are 18 credits, that's without a dual credit or a dual credit, so I mean, just the path program, you can have 18 credits paid for, or you have a bicycle on top of your dual credit, great, you have to.
Seen it.
It's a big advantage, but it's hard.
Yep. Especially great if you go to Madison, because you can get preferential scheduling. Otherwise, you're standing in line as a freshman with nothing, you know, and you might not get a course you need, so...
I know this has helped a lot of our students get directly into nursing programs by nature, because they can take some of the medical classes at a time, and I think it's been a good program, which is helpful.
And the kids that didn't, that failed, did they have other classes that they also signed up for that they passed?
If they're gonna do it, we'll watch out for them.
Okay.
It's that, it wasn't like they struggled through it, it was a lack of one effort and motivation.
Okay.
They were related to the classes, and they decided they were too difficult for them, more than capable of being an interview student, see what worst.
And you have to approve all of the kids that sign up for these classes, or not?
We have to. We have to let them sign up for the classes.
Okay.
But now, we don't know that they have to.
Like, you can't say to one kid that you can't do it, and the other one you can. Whoever chooses to sign up, okay? Okay.
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 Okay, just the first reading.
Okay.
But it makes perfect sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Now we'll go on to second reading and possible adoption of new and revised Niola School Board policies, 2264, 2266. This is Title IX. You're gonna lead us in?
Yep. I will, I will start that conversation here.
Okay.
When we did our first read in last month, we assured the time that there's lots of moving parts within this conversation, that we've been given a timeline for implementation without a whole lot of information, and there continues to be litigation and other things. And before I even get there, I just want to share a little bit of the history of Title IX here in the U.S. and just some major points for us to think about as we move into this conversation here. So Title IX of the Educational Amendments of 1972 was actually enacted in Congress in June of 1972 and signed into law by Richard, President Nixon after that. And the law prohibited sex discrimination of any educational program activity receiving any type of federal financial aid. And that law is often linked to the Civil Rights Act from the 1960s, because, because really that conversation around, around sports and sex discrimination in educational programs kind of started there, but what wasn't fully addressed. So it was addressed in 1972. And even with the original intent, there are immediate challenges and failed attempts, failed amendments for Title IX, including in 1976, when NCAA filed a lawsuit challenging the legality of Title IX. That lawsuit was dismissed two years later, and then from that point, there have just been judgments and additions to Title IX that have established precedent and created more opportunities for female athletes around the United States. In the past several years, the scope of Title IX has also increased, including how school districts are required to handle Title IX complaints. Our administration had to go through specific training in regards to the process several years ago when it was, when that was amended, and now we're currently going through the new required training to be compliant by the August 1st, 2024 deadline. So the admin team went through one training so far. There's a few more in August, because even though the policy has to be implemented from the federal, by federal guidelines by August 1st, the training, the rest of the training won't happen until August, because it hasn't been created yet. As we look at the most current changes to the federal requirements and the subsequent policy updates, there's just a few things I want to note here. So the new changes revise some definitions on the process for handling complaints. So these changes should make the process a little more manageable for school districts. Again, our team went through some training several years ago on handling complaints. Some of the new changes with this update is gonna make that process, hopefully, a little bit more smoother. One, for example, one of the changes, now the investigator can also be the decision-maker with... within the same complaint. That was something that, that wasn't there before, and a lot of smaller districts really, and smaller, you know, school district had trouble finding multiple folks, and they would have to spend lots of legal, legal money on attorneys to come and help be that decision-maker. The July 2024 decision by a district court in Kansas created a preliminary injunction for enforcement of the new regulations for several states, and that included three national organizations, the Young Americans Foundation, the Female Athletes United, the Moms for Liberty, all on that list. And those organizations were required to submit paperwork to the Kansas court to be included in the injunction by July 15th. So Wisconsin, as a state, is not on that list of states for the injunction, but there are school districts from Wisconsin that did make that list. Tomorrow River Schools is not listed on that list, and we are not identified as one of the districts or schools for, for the injunction. The new regulations do not change the current WIA transgender participation policy in place in Wisconsin since 2018. So that would still be the document and the procedure and policy that we would follow for any potential WIA transgender participation. That policy establishes a criteria and process for requests, and by all accounts, it's, it's worked. I've been talking with, with lots of folks through the years. I've not heard a lot of, really not heard any complaints in regards to that, to that policy. We already have settled case law in Wisconsin from 19, or 2017, 2017, that protects transgender students from harassment in schools. That's Whittaker versus Kenosha Unified School District. So we already have that precedent set in Wisconsin, and currently there's, even if we qualified for the injunction, we would still be held to that ruling because it was within Wisconsin. So it's just another complicated layer to all of this that's going on right now. We have been advised by Neola and by our own legal counsel that we should be in compliance with updated federal law. By not doing so, we could potentially lose our federal funding, and we could open ourselves up to potential lawsuits by openly not following the law. There will no doubt be more appeals. There's going to be more court cases around this subject, absolutely. This fall election will bring some potential change, and, and this is an issue that just may find, find its way before the Supreme Court. You know, my recommendation is that we adopt the Title IX updates so that we're compliant with federal law, that we maintain our funding, and we protect ourselves, protect the district from litigation. And I always hope to keep politics out of the schoolhouse doors, and, and our plan is to continue to do good things for, for students and families and our community in Tomorrow River. You know, we'll continue to have good, honest, and reasonable conversations with our families. And we just, we want to focus on our mission and vision, focus on implementing our new profile of a learner, to ensure all of our kids have those important five qualities that, that we want to see within all of our kids. And we really want to keep that our focus this year. And again, we, we know there'll be some potential updates coming into the fall and into the year. But my recommendation is to protect ourselves, that we knowingly should need to be compliant with, with this new federal law.
Questions?
I don't know if really much is changing more than trying to hold schools responsible by having somebody responsible for it in the school.
Yeah, we already have a non-discrimination policy in place that.
It isn't, it would be different if they were trying to override the WIA and stuff like that, but they're not, they're not taking local control away from us.
One of my concerns is you got training, but you don't know what it is before you.
Before you adopt something, exactly.
It's like you have to pass it to plan it was in it.
Exactly.
It's a problem.
Most of the training is in, in regards to the process. Process changes.
It appears that's what most of the policy is about, is the complaint process.
The complaint process, yeah, yeah. The, how, how transgender, you know, students are, you know, addressed in athletics is not in this law. It's, it's not, it's not in there. We are still following the WIA standard.
And you said Mike and Sheri are going to be the ones that are going to hit this up?
And all of our admin team is getting trained in this as well, because I think it's just important that, that we understand what that process is.
So if you do this because there is so much in question on the constitutionality of this, you keep record of complaints under both the existing policy and the.
Yeah, that's what we're required to do right now. We have to keep the old policy on the books because if somebody would come back and say, I was harassed last year by, by so-and-so, we have to use the old policy framework for that investigation. If it was something that happened after August 1, then, then the new procedures would, would apply to that. So technically, we have to keep the old policy on our book as well. And, you know, the question has a rose, what if this gets struck down? Then we would revert back to the, the old policy. Or if there was other changes added to it, then we would have to adapt to whatever the new federal guidelines are.
We would automatically have to adapt to it if we approve it, you're saying? Or would they give us an update and then we decide again? Or how does that work?
Probably be like any other.
No, that's what I mean.
It'd be like any other policy we have to change.
Yeah, I guess it really depends on what happens in the fall. I think the election will have a big part in, in this, truly. I do think there's, there's a good chance that some higher courts are going to jump in on rulings on this, if not the Supreme Court. But, but until then.
Just the process seems to be at odds with the latest ruling of the Chevron doctrine with administrative rulemaking. Nobody's, we don't, we can't afford to bring that, so.
Yeah.
How much funding are we talking about there?
Seven hundred or so, yeah.
Seven hundred thousand.
Which isn't the biggest portion of it by any means, but it's significant enough.
Those are our grants for the extra things usually, you know, your IDEA, your ESEA.
Our special ed funding, yes.
Your Carl Perkins, your, all of that stuff is tied to it.
Yeah, our professional development money, yeah.
If we've been, if we would have been officially named within the court, then the injunction
would have applied for us.
And we would have been using the existing policy.
And then we would have had to use the exist in until they shared next guidance.
Okay.
Is there a chance it can get added to that or not?
No, it was July 15th.
It's by school, not by district.
Yeah.
So it is specific schools that are listed, not full districts?
That's interesting.
Which is.
So you could have it for the high school.
Problem some as well.
You could have certain schools following different policies, absolutely, within the same district.
So like in our school.
You could have Amherst Elementary.
Middle school and high school.
Middle school, high school has a different, and just have the same Title IX coordinator. Like, there are districts that are, are under that right now.
Any more questions?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why didn't our district make the motion?
Because those three organizations had to contact the, the court with, with the names of the schools.
They didn't do that?
People that are, I don't know. Everyone signed up, everyone signed up Amherst and not the option.
Yeah, I don't know. From my understanding, I think there was, schools represented from 42 different states that were on that list.
Yes.
And, yeah. And of that list in Wisconsin, I think there was about 25-ish, maybe, maybe 25-ish schools, something like that.
So those three organizations are the ones that listed the schools. So we can't list our own school on that list.
And that's, right. If there was only 25-ish, you've got to think about it, we technically have four, five schools within our one district. So that's not very many.
300 plus school districts, yeah.
I'm looking for a motion to approve, to be compliant. That's what, that's how.
It doesn't mean we have to like it.
Correct. I'm looking for a motion one way or another.
I mean, it's not like we're sane, yeah.
It's happened in the past, I know, in the Obama administration when some of this started coming through, where states said, we're not going to abide by it, and the administration said, then your funding's going away.
Mm-hmm.
So they pretty much said, either approve it, or you're done.
That, that's basically what I'm trying to say is, we, in order to, to preserve our funding and keep us protected from litigation, we need to approve what's on the table tonight. If we don't, we're at risk.
Yeah, and.
You know, a lot of money coming right, what's right for your children? Money come in front of what's right for your children.
Yeah, but if we don't have the money, then the school's not here.
We're in the business of educating kids, that's what we're here for. And if we don't have the money to do that.
I know it's, but that's, that's how a school is funded, is by taxpayers' dollars and state and federal funding. And I know that it's easy to say, as you're sitting there, to say, what's more important, but when you really look down and look at the numbers, that's why, that's why the government does what they do with this, when they threaten you to say, either do it, they put you in a position, there's probably, if there's any districts that can afford to say, well, they keep your funding, especially this day and age.
I mean, that's why we just went for an operational referendum, because we couldn't afford to pay our bills to educate the kids. So if we have to figure out.
And we've made a lot of cuts. I mean, we did make a lot of cuts, and we continue to.
And I'll also say this, so the, the WIA transgender policy has been around for, at least 2018, the last time that was advised, or the last time it was revised. We've been living under, a lot, lot of, a lot of this Title IX stuff beyond the new language for several years. We've been able to make it work. We've not, we've not had a problem here. Like, it has not been an issue. And.
We haven't infringed upon anybody's rights.
And we hasn't, we haven't infringed upon any rights. We haven't put anybody in bad situations. So I, I also think, you know, when we look at both ends of the spectrum of, oh my goodness, you have to do this, versus, oh my goodness, it's, it's going to be awful if we do it, I, I think it's going to be more in the middle. I don't see this having a major impact on our day-to-day operations one way, I really don't.
Because I think it has to do more with accountability.
Yeah.
You know, and we're doing what.
The bulk of it is, is just there's some unknowns in there.
Exactly.
Definitely not definitions that could, could be problematic, but we don't know.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the part that, you know.
Yep. And we can always make changes.
Yeah.
Still, while you can expose yourself, and so there's a lot of people saying, oh, that has to do with, because there's a law against those types of things. It contradicts itself.
There's a lot of contradictions.
There is.
So I guess as an incident would arise, you'd have to evaluate where things are at on this.
And apply it to the, to the policy, to the law.
Because we even talked about that when they said about having the bathroom thing. You know, and some schools were going up and beyond and building new bathrooms for everything, where we designated an area for them. And haven't had, and then that was a concern, are you sure that's going to be good enough? And all this stuff, and never had a problem.
It's not been an issue.
Yeah, it's not been an issue. So.
So they're clear what we're, what we're approving tonight?
As you said, it may not be something you're for.
So I'm looking for a motion one way or another.
I'll make a motion to adopt the new and revised Neola School Board policies, 2264 and 2266.
I'll second.
We have motion in second. Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm going to say aye.
Record one, one, one no vote. Policy is passed then. Next item, we discussed in a finance meeting, but we need to take official action on it if we're going to table it, and that's review and possibly approve van purchase.
I think the van purchase, I'm not sure. It is.
Okay.
That could, that could sway a decision here, but we'll still hold on.
You still want to find out about the funding?
From the donor.
We have to do that. I think that's important too.
I will contact a donor, and we'll, we'll get from the dealer, the, the exact final all-in write-in, and bring that to our, our next meeting.
Okay, and that'll be the seven o'clock meeting, two weeks from now. Okay. So items for next agenda. Different from what we normally run across when we get into August. Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to go in closed session. Somebody like to read that?
Yeah, the Board of Education reserves the right to declare closed session pursuant to state statutes, 19.85, sub 1C, E, and F, and 118.24 for the purpose of review and possible discussions relating to employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee, support staff wages, administrative and salary, support staff contracts and salaries, and transportation contract recommendations.
Do I have a second?
A second.
We have motion in second, we'll do a roll call vote. Locan?
Aye.
Helbach?
Aye.
Malrooney?
Aye.
Stachinsky?
Aye.
Kreshak, aye. Anybody else we're keeping in besides board members?
No.
Okay, we are in closed session. Thank you for.